Good morning, we'll call this meeting to order. Young County Commissioners Court is sitting in a regular meeting on Monday, December 12th, 2016. It is 9:31 a.m. I note that this meeting was posted the matter of fourth time required. All members of the court are present, and if it's convenient, if you will please stand, and we'll have Commissioner Sykes, I believe it is, to legislate the case complacently.
That's right. I would like to say to the Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this great county. Thank you for the many blessings. Help us to see what it is that we have. Help us to help others in this time of, this very special time of the year as we celebrate Christ's birth and His gift to us from His Father. All this, we pray in Your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the V, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Anybody to see? Item number three, public comments, announcements, presentations that I've put up, noticed this morning in my magazine. Congratulations goes to Mr. Sykes here for achieving his advanced curriculum certificate. So that presented to him at the state conference, I believe in October.
Yes, sir.
And does anybody else have anything that they need to make a little bit of? We have a sheriff here, Travis. Would you like to say anything to the court? Okay. Item number four, consider county clerk managed previous meeting, November 28th, 2016. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections that need to be made there?
Still no.
We have a motion of Commissioner Wiley and a second Commissioner Rogers to accept those amendments as presented, all in favor. Carry five, zero. Item number five is consider auditor's budget amendments and payment vouchers.
I have vouchers, and we're only working in seventeen now. We finished up sixteen. We won't pay anything else out of there.
You're done with sixteen?
We're done with sixteen. I haven't closed the year yet, but we will soon. Today's vouchers total is forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighteen and fifty-nine cents, and out of the general is thirty-one thousand, four-ten, forty-eight.
So what was that? State the number, ten, forty-two.
Forty-two, one eighteen, and fifty-nine, and then the general is thirty-one, four-ten, forty-eight.
Second, thirty, seven. No amendments?
No, sir.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Wiley and a second by Commissioner Pruitt to approve those vouchers payable as presented, all in FY seventeen. All in favor? Carry five. Six million, three hundred and fifteen, one hundred and thirty-nine, twenty-one. Got a little cushion there. Motion by Mr. Pruitt and a second by Mr. Wiley to approve securities pledges as presented. All in favor? Five, zero. Item number seven is consider extension agent Miranda Revel and Justin Rogers' report and request for reimbursement, seventeen, twenty-six, forty-two, and six, seventy-one, thirty-one respectively.
I'm going to approve the reimbursement.
If Miranda's doesn't add up to seventeen hundred, I don't know where she gets that number.
I just have to run those numbers.
You're right. It shows one thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. Is that what you got?
Yeah. Twenty-one.
Okay. Twenty-one.
Yep, yep.
I'll look at it and see what we can do.
It's just wrong. It's wrong on the agenda, I guess, or I don't know.
I will draw my motion for approval, but I don't want the numbers.
Who's the vouchers?
Seventeen, twenty-six.
Oh, you gotta add that five twenty-one.
Eight thirteen.
You did.
I think it's eight thirteen.
Oh, thank you.
Didn't add the combined month prior or anything?
No, and I just have it in for eight thirteen, twenty-four.
You have what?
Eight thirteen, twenty-four.
Thirteen hundred and twenty-four dollars?
Eight hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-four cents.
Almost right.
That's her total, is eight thirteen, twenty-four.
Yeah, but she's got the mileage and miles and...
Just mileage and miles, uh-huh. Eight hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-four cents.
She's got that something, or she's got the...
Yeah.
Look.
Take this, sure.
This is her travel.
I mean, that's seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah, but she doesn't charge all the mileage. See, she only charged a hundred.
Yeah. Eight thirteen and about twenty-one, that would be seventeen, huh?
No, the total was eight thirteen.
Everything is accurate. Everything's accurate.
The six ninety-one, seventy-four, one twenty-one, fifteen.
I said eight thirteen.
But eight thirteen is the total.
This five twenty-one doesn't come through.
This is not...
Oh, she, listen, number four.
I didn't add the five hundred and sixty.
Oh, you didn't add it.
I don't know. I'll have to talk, if we, if we didn't enter that five hundred and...
Don't pay much attention to you. Check them all.
She didn't put it there, but...
Okay, so we're gonna amend that number as...
I'll amend my motion to fit the correct number, which is the correct number for a memorandum of Miranda Revel, be eight thirteen, twenty-four.
We might owe her the five twenty-one, fifty. She put it on the back, didn't add it to...
It still doesn't add up to seventeen hundred.
But the total of the meals is on the original request. The one twenty-one, fifty for meals is on the...
She'll program that out if it's not right.
Yeah, it is.
I agree.
And then the mileage is in with the mileage.
This is just...
Anyway, we only wrote a check for eight thirteen.
Seven one, thirty-one, forty-seven. She's a...
Eight thirteen.
Trying to be her budget anyway, I think.
See, she just charged in that travel destination at five twenty-one, fifty. That's added in there.
So eight thirteen, twenty-four. Six seventy-one, thirty-one, that's right.
We only wrote a check for eight thirteen, twenty-four.
See, she's got seven hundred and fifty miles right there, and she got twelve hundred and eighty-one miles. Nothing.
She didn't add that seven fifty.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Sykes, second by Commissioner Rogers, to approve that request for reimbursement as corrected. All in favor? Carry five. Item number eight, consider tax resale to A. Purdue Brandon Collins and Mott L.L.P. This is five oh two Bluet Street, thirteen oh seven. Now, five oh two Brazos and thirteen oh seven Bluet here in Graham. Those properties, if I recall them right, the district was making some time back about that, and I think they're condemning those properties and wanting to remove them.
We've already approved them, sir. We've already approved them.
These addresses.
We did Brazos. Yeah. We've approved them.
Well, we proved that, that they're gonna take the property now. City of Graham, we've got to execute this deed, so as what this motion or what this item is, or execution of that deed.
It's a deed without one.
Yes, it is. But those are, those are the addresses, I believe, that were previously approved.
Uh-huh. Has to be, has to be, need to be signed by you and the county clerk, if you know the right.
Deed needs to be executed and...
We need authorized the execution of the deed.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Commissioner Sykes, second by Commissioner Wiley, to authorize the execution of the deeds to five oh two Brazos Street, thirteen oh seven Bluet Street, to the city of Graham. Y'all in favor? Carry five. Item number nine, consider contract with American National Leasing, Sheriff Department control vehicles.
I'll leave a copy of the front page in the amortization schedule. That's the detail that we could sign for both vehicles. They have them now in their possession. They're open to access.
They're wondering money. This one was done by Chief Detective, we left, so it's, it's been a little bit crazy trying to get it all put back together, but they've had their cars, it's actually been delivered for almost, almost two months, trucks, sorry. Did they do it? Yeah, they're, they're kinda excited about getting it. They've just now been equipped, they got delivered this past week, so they've got those and they're ready to get them. This, what this has enabled us to do, we haven't completed the sale of the other two vehicles. That's what we're gonna do today, is get this signed, so we can get their checks sent to them, and then get pictures of those two trucks, so I can get those bids on. To do this one, what we decided to do, the judge asked us to do is kinda give an estimate based upon what we think we might get for the, for those two that we're putting up to bid.
Bakery or conservatory.
Yeah.
Any difference if they might be in our favor?
Yes, sir. The average resale value on those is eighty-five, on the one with the hundred thousand miles, eighty-nine hundred. One to hundred, eight thousand miles was seventy-eight fifty. I use six thousand for the resale value. So I, I fully expect to give them one and six. So the payments are seen.
And that's for?
Those are for the two trucks that are being...
With what year one?
Those are...
Twelve.
Twelve.
One has a hundred and eight thousand, one has a hundred thousand miles.
And it just seems like we've got to get a better price than that.
We are. That's what we're doing.
Yeah, we are.
This is just an estimate, what we're saying.
Working number.
Yeah, just to, just to get a number in, but it was very conservative, because I didn't want it to be Young's favor. So even though the payments are low, it should drop down.
But for you to, for you to issue payments, then you have to tab a contract?
Correct, yes, sir.
To execute it, to do that. Is this, is this gonna be, is this like a financing thing where you'll be the first lien holder, or are you gonna own the vehicle?
No, sir, y'all will be, will be the first lien holder. Y'all still own the vehicle, same as...
That's a bit confusing, a little bit.
Yeah.
Good question. We got fifteen-five, a lot of cutting out there.
For both of them?
Yeah, we got a twenty-seven thousand dollar now.
The residual that we used was the nine, the residual that suggests could be used on those is thirteen, nine, fifty. So again, very conservative on the residual, so we're looking at the terms paper, as these other ones have in the past.
That forty-two, twenty-five, is that what? Do we use any of that original equipment?
Yes, we did. Like whatever that's good.
Some of those you used, some of those, and some of these new.
That's for both of them, the four thousand, fifty-five?
That's one.
That's one, yeah.
We're looking at a single truck here.
Yes, sir, those are single. There's two trucks, it's the same.
Double, yes.
The same.
So it's about eighty-five hundred dollars to get both of them equipped. And then repurposing some of the equipment that we had.
Correct. Because I've got, for instance, I have one going through tomorrow with another city that's, they've got fourteen thousand dollars worth of equipment they're putting on the vehicle before they do the radar and the camera, so it's, having only four thousand dollars is definitely, definitely, you have to be able to repurpose a little equipment.
So whatever you get from the truck, are you actually gonna use as a damn payment?
Yes, sir.
Or is it not?
Yeah, it'll go back towards, anything above, everything that we get on the truck, it'll go back towards it. And I'm, like I said, the, the values that the, this is for the average on the black book, average value for the one with a hundred and eight thousand was an eighty-five hundred dollar value, and average for the one that had a hundred and eight, or that's for a hundred thousand, one with a hundred and eight thousand was seventy-eight fifty. I used six thousand for both. So it's up to the court on what y'all wanna do on whether, let's, let's just say you get ten thousand dollars back on the one with six, with a hundred thousand miles, and you get nine thousand with the one with a hundred and eight. If you wanna just apply one to the truck, or if you wanna add it up and do the nineteen thousand divided by two and apply it equally, whichever way the court decides to do it, I'm, I'm guessing that you'll get just a little bit more on the one with a hundred thousand miles. You never can tell.
I think you're dividing it equally.
Yes, sir.
And then are you still gonna keep your payment, your payment at sixty-five hundred?
No, sir, the payment will go down. But what you apply again? Yeah, anything above is solid.
It has to go down.
True.
Right.
Be you on the budget.
Reliable, just make a contact, they come with their money.
Yes, and I've talked with them, and they understand, they didn't, we're coming to court today, and the check will be issued after that.
You're not gonna let them have it until you get contracts.
Correct.
Well... Thirty years, I don't know. That's a lot.
They're telling me the residual value.
Yeah.
No, the residual on the truck is listed for, and I based it on having a hundred and twenty thousand miles, residual on the truck in three years, so you have thirteen, nine, fifty.
Need to know, we think...
Well, that's with your payment and then your residual. You're not gonna owe fifty-five, because you have forty now on there.
You'd say that's just worth thirteen?
Thirteen, because you have your regular payment, and then you have your, you have your residual on the backside of that, so...
On the signed date, payable on the signed date.
Correct.
Fifteen-five.
Well, what we're saying is, and it's the same thing we have just now, where you've gone past the payment date, because we started this, when we started it, you're looking at a five to six month rollout, the time you start to get your vehicles, that's when that residual will be due, is that when we do the, when we get the trucks in, to get the next round of vehicles, not on that date.
And there's nobody with them, different one?
Hopefully. Depends on when we started. Make sense? What he's asking.
Yeah.
So, so in order to keep it a true thirty-six month lease, instead of extending it out or changing the payment date, we do everything from today's date. So we have your third payment and the residual both in the same time. But the residuals only due whenever you get the next round of cars in.
Payment on late is what?
Um, payments are just, it's the six thousand.
Six thousand.
And the residual is nine.
So the interest will continue to accrue on the residual?
It could, we haven't done that, we, it could, but we haven't been doing that. It's good.
So if you think about it, well...
If you, if you did everything on the same day, yes.
We could pay the sixty-five oh four in this golden.
Right, and that's what's, that's what's been happening in the past, we've been making the payment, and then we don't worry about the residual until we get to the next round of cars. So it's why it looks like it's a fifteen thousand, it's not actually a fifteen thousand, unless, unless we start the process, you know, in the middle of that second year.
Before eight hundred.
Right, which is great.
And our first payment's in fiscal year eighteen.
Truckers buy those and license, license them.
Another option.
Another option. You'll do one here.
Yeah.
Right out, like, sure.
Blue.
Probably right out by...
Good way, don't you think?
There's, there'll be more life on, and that's why we're getting, that's why we're gonna get seven, eight thousand to ten thousand of these trucks on trade hand, you're still alive on two.
Okay, what's the fourth question here? What else? We need to file those, yeah, because we need to prove the contract.
I'll second this motion. Okay. Motion by Sykes, second by Pruitt, to execute contract American leasing for two Sheriff Department control trucks.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Okay. Really? You said you're using Black Book?
Black Book and...
What week?
Sir?
What week? Those are weekly, right?
They are, and we do it online.
What's the, what's the trend on that?
No, that's a good question. I don't, I don't check it every week to see where, where it's moving, I just pull it up for the value that I need that week, but that's a good question. How extended would it be as a dollar increase in the value, if those values would get stronger? But I don't know.
Can you, can you give us that information if we were to call you?
Okay.
Got one vehicle, who's making some claims?
Anytime.
So that'll impress us to us to do that.
If you all send the, the bid, I can pull up, and the mileage, I can tell you what the value would be at that time, and also any estimated mileage that you wanna add to it.
You understand Black Book?
I don't.
But I have, is the local regional auction numbers, that's what Carter bringing as of, a week ago. What about our machine?
I'll have to get a takeout.
No, well, that'd be through, through the dealer.
Like, through their, through their day. Through the dealer with machines right now is not good.
But I expect that to jump within the next, it's probably gonna take a year, because the whole permanent base and all things gonna revamp, it's gonna...
Well, I've talked to, so you've got this gonna be in the script?
And they, and everybody's already set up, they've already had all their camps and everything's already there, so I think the ramp ups will be a lot faster.
So you're not using NADA, Kelly Blumberg?
No, the only other issue, only other thing that we use is Mannheim. Mannheim is a daily auction service, and we'll use them as well, too, to get the values.
So you've written up to many values of course. We're gonna give you...
There you are.
You have to rewind it.
I'm taking pictures today of one trucks, and...
I can turn around a little bit now.
Yes, sir.
The parts just here.
Do you want me to send yous?
Miss Rex.
If you do wanna get, do you want to wait till next court?
So it'll show previous weeks. Average. Those cars actually sold. He's got a, he's got a valid question here, when you're talking about whether, do we need to approve on the bids, go next board?
Well, the question is, do we wanna go ahead and give you authority to approve the bid process once we get the bids, because I'm taking pictures, gonna try and get those bids done this week, so we can get everything closed out, or do y'all wanna wait till the next court, for you to look at the bids and decide?
Well...
Give the judge approval to select the right bid, or do y'all wanna wait till, bring to the court, next court?
Does that affect this contract, or will that, I don't know, I found out if that affects this contract, or will it affect, do you pay it?
No, I don't.
I suspect bringing it back to the court, or, or, you know, maybe it's what, financial or corporate link.
Well, I try my best on those others, we, we let y'all make the decision, y'all make the highest, we get on, on both levels, and then come back.
Well, I mean, if it's something else, we always take the highest bid, and I know y'all do, too, it's, it's just a matter of how you want it to be stated. Does that make sense?
It's kind of their vehicles.
If it takes arms of a license, I would be willing to authorize the elimination.
Did you really?
We received them.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna go back, I think the governor's little question, go back and get item number three, with public comments, announcements, and presentations. Who do we have here back here that wishes to comment?
The Speaker left the room. But as a, as Young County Humane Society, they wanted to speak with you, and the Director couldn't make it this morning about the potholes at the, out there at their location, and they took some pictures, if you guys want to see them, and they would like for you to help them out by handling those potholes.
Who's gonna be the spokesperson?
Be back shortly.
Okay, then we'll come back and revisit that. Okay, item number ten is a consider authorize, authorization of memorandum of agreement between Young County and Helen Farabee Centers. This is something that we budgeted for, and it's an annual thing, I think it's in your packet, where it's somewhat explanatory. It's a local match, which is gonna accommodate provisions for their location here in Graham, utilities, telephone, those kind of expenses that they incur in that, and then the mental health services that they render for Young County, ten thousand. The local match is ninety-four, seventy-five, that's ninety-four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the intellectual disabilities part of that is eight thousand. That expense formerly was the shelter workshop, we don't have shelter workshop anymore, but those figures have changed in quite a while, I believe, several years. We budgeted in that manner for them, so we just need authorization to execute that memorandum of agreement. Go move.
We're actually right to change it today. You understand, it's pretty quick.
I would, could go next Commissioner's court.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Pruitt, to authorize the execution of the memorandum of agreement with Helen Farabee Centers, all in favor? Carry five, zero.
So we'll go ahead and tell you those on the next Commissioner's court, Judge Ray.
Item number eleven, don't notice there's any, or the code, there not any action required on that, except for the filing of it, and that's an acknowledgement of the conflicts and disclosure statement of Mr. Jimmy Wiley, Commissioner Prentice, before. That's required to be filed with the records administrator, which presumably the county And that may need to be posted on the internet, so I move that the court acknowledges that acknowledgement of conflicts disclosure statement. Is that it? All in favor? Carry five. That's according to one seventy-six, I believe, law code. That's a necessary item. Okay, just going back... That's according to one seventy-six, I believe, law code. That's a necessary item. Okay, let's go back now and visit number, item number three, public comments, announcements, and presentations. If you will, please come forward. State your name clearly and plainly, so the clerk...
My name is Greg Noe, last name is N O E.
N O E.
About Lake Graham. I'm here to, as a friend of the Humane Society, the Young County Humane Society. There has been a large problem with the Humane Society, with the intersection trying to access into the Humane Society for several months now. Where there have been large holes, it floods, it goes underwater, and of course, when it goes underwater, you can't see where the large holes are. This is between Swans and the dance club there. It's actually the only access to Humane Society. There's been, comments have been made several times and nothing has been done to get this fixed. Lately, they have brought some gravel out and kinda pushed it around and put some cones up, which is certainly not a fix. I feel that this kind of deters people from wanting to make donations to the Humane Society because when you come, I almost thought I had a wheel ripped off my car the last time I took a donation out there because the hole was so bad. So to me, it kinda is detrimental to the running of the Humane's business to get food for the animals and such as that. And I know that there's been kinda some burdens of heads between the city Graham and the Young County Humane Society, but this one intersection, I don't know how much liability Swans holds against it because they run big giant trucks through that intersection. But I do feel like if it was on the road that was going towards the arena, or it was on the road going to the ballpark, it would've been fixed. The day it was brought to anybody's attention. And this has been lingering and lingering. And I was wondering if we could address this and try and get this thing fixed so that people can get in and out of the Humane Society, bring donations and do work.
So that's the intersection. Woody and Craig. Woody and Craig. Okay, that's gonna be, which Saps area?
Mr. Saps, do you think that there is some, some way we can address this? It's, it's been ongoing for quite some time now.
Hold on, let...
Okay.
Mr. Would you like to address this at all?
You know, right now, there's, there's things being done for that intersection. That was an inherited problem with that industrial park. The problem is much more complicated than, than you made it sound. First thing, if you'd like to have a sit-down meeting with me, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and we can discuss it.
Okay, as to what, as to what might be able to get done to...
Yes, sir. As to what the status of it is, why it's the way it is, and what can be done about it to alleviate some of the problem.
Well, do you feel that Swans hold some of the liability for that condition of that intersection?
Sir, that's in an industrial park. The way that those roads were built there, as you, as you mentioned, that intersection, with even the smallest amount of rain becomes a pond.
Yes.
And when pavement sets underwater for a length of time with heavy traffic going over it, it continues to erase any kind of repairs you do to it. Basically, the intersection is gonna have to be totally rebuilt, which is an expensive proposition and I've got to try to fit it somewhere in my budget. Now with the annexation that's proceeding between us and the city to take that street in, that is a city intersection or will be. It's already been approved. We're just waiting for the final plan. I worked with the city. They have got a fix for it. It may not be a good fix, but it's the way the city is going to do it. If you'd like to come see me, I'll talk to you about what's going to be done out there to fix that.
Okay, can I set a time and date to come see you?
Uh, yes, sir. Tomorrow morning, my office, nine o'clock. Precinct War.
Okay, and where's your office at?
Last building on the left going out sixteen south, towards where the county extension office is, thirty-two oh one highway sixteen south.
Highway sixteen south.
Yes, sir.
Nine o'clock tomorrow morning?
Yes, sir.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Bring, if you'd like to bring with you too.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You ladies have anything, any comments?
Don't be shy. I know you're not shy.
Okay, item number twelve. Consider road crossing permit. I got an email. It was on the email this morning. I got, got in here. It says I had emailed Inbridge this Carl Handkey?
No, he's actually an IBX hack in there.
And he emailed me back and he said, we have found an alternative option. So I'm taking that, but they're no longer requesting the permit.
That's good on your part.
That's good on my part. Item number thirteen, there's a list in your packet of historical commission members. I think there's about forty-six or seven total on there. I believe they're all viable members. I don't think there's any, I don't think there's been any necessary changes. There's several on there that not, not as active, active, I think. Some of them are black more today, but they're members, I think, all in good standing, all residents either of this county or another county. And I think the code calls for at least seven members from Young County and there is no maximum on commission numbers. So this happens to be seven from Young County and they're almost all up from Young County. I move that we reappoint the members as listed on the roster for the Young County Historical Commission for the next two years.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I don't know.
I think those are two-year warrants. Item number fourteen is, let's go, before we do that, let's go with S one supplemental agenda. S one on supplemental agenda, discuss consideration to execute master agreements for Hart, intercepting very devoting equipment. Uh, this is something that's been an ongoing thing. It's been certified for quite some time by the federal government. It's been in use in other states. They postponed this about three times, based on their law.
Most current word I have from anybody who has any authority whatsoever is that Secretary Koskos will sign the certification before he leaves office in January. So what you've got is the non-executable version of the contract. I'm leaving midweek and won't be back till after the first of the year. And so we're planning on that contract, the executable form to come in, hopefully minutes after Secretary Koskos signs off on the certification. What happens then is I take the executable form and send it back to the secretary's office, get them to sign off and say, yes, this is an okay contract. And then we sign the contract and Hart signs the contract. And then on January the third, right early, we will have new equipment delivered to the courthouse.
Well, it's presuming.
Yeah, if everything goes like we planned it, so.
The deadline authorization takes December fifteenth, as the pastor prayer, and Secretary Koskos has tendered his resignation and he's gonna leave the office on fourth January. This certification's been on his desk for three...
Three years now, well.
Well, that's actually been on there for three months.
Yeah, he's had some time to look at things. They did extend the public comment period and that's, that's the deadline we're looking at now as far as the fifteenth goes. There were questions during the public comment period that he wanted to make sure he had adequate answers for, and so they extended that. And that's why we're looking at the fifteenth.
And to verify what Lauren has said, I did receive an email. Guess it might've been forwarded to me, but it was kinda addressed to me that Jonathan Mathers with Springer's office had talked directly, it sounded like talked directly with the Secretary of State and with his chief elections official. And they both verified that Koskos would sign that. Hopefully the process will begin to unfold and will. I guess we need to execute that contract.
We can't execute it until the secretary approves that contract, but because I'm gonna be out of the office, if we can designate somebody to be able to sign that contract when it does come through, that way we don't have to come back to court.
So we're approving the context of the contract.
Correct.
And authorizing a signature on that contract when it's approved.
When it's approved.
As long as it stays unrevised from the form we're approving.
The only thing that will change is whatever blanks are in that will be filled in with our name and Hart and that sort of thing. So it's basically the same contract we've got now with Hart.
You say basically, what changes?
Well, the change is the equipment because the equipment has to be specifically named inside the contract and the version numbers and the softwares and all that.
So the actual inventory of the equipment we're...
Right, yeah. So that's, that's really the only change that I've seen that has come through from the HVS system that we currently have. So it's, it's very boiling plate. Did you take it by to Chris? Did he look at it at all?
I did, yeah. I haven't heard back from him.
Okay, so my understanding that this is the same agreement that every county signs when they enter in the party, so.
See, I know, I believe Lubbock County is...
Lubbock, Medina, and Madison are the other three that I know of that are doing the exact same.
They approved it this way?
Well, I don't know if they've approved it this way, but they're waiting on the same shipment as we.
They've signed purchase agreements with Hart for the equipment. And I did hear from the Medina County judge, Pete, he verified that too, that he had also spoken with Chief Elections Officer, what's his name?
Keith Ingram.
Yes, Keith Ingram, that's right. And he verified that Koskos was gonna execute that before he left office.
My understanding is it needs one signature and that's pretty much it, so.
When he...
So if we offer out the judge's signature on this contract after it's approved by them, say you're comfortable?
Yeah, because I can take care of anything else, you know, by email.
Can you give me any insights as to why he has not signed it and what has been removed that he said, make him sign it now?
You want me to take it?
I did. I'm asking for that information, you know?
I think it's strictly a CYA.
Yeah.
Just to go through the process and let some of those folks that didn't wanna go to the electronic version of it.
The main issue that the public hearing addressed, there was a lady that came in who did not like the way that ballots were recreated from the machines. If we needed to recount.
Right.
Um, statute says they have to be recreated. She wanted it to look like the ballot with the boxes and the, you know, indicated, you know, check boxes and that sort of thing.
Instead of a printer-friendly version?
Right. What we've got is a printer-friendly database. This is the votes that came through. Both have met the requirement for state law and federal law for the past, well, fifteen years. So I, I really think the judge is right that Koskos just wants to kind of dot eyes and cross t's and, and, you know, so I, I don't think there's... The, the original version, the one point oh version, has the exact same database reincarnation. It's already been certified, so I think it's just because somebody came in and...
Of course, nothing ominous, it's just a political reality.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say as long as Chris looks at the contract and sees nothing, it's not...
There's any disturbance in the contract from what we are seeing right now, I would have a problem with doing it. But if there is one, I'd like to have a look see or know petition at least to what it is.
Well, and, and when I'm sending that executable version, I'll send that to you guys too. So I'll just do a mass email so you guys can see exactly what the secretary will see as far as what we hope to have him approve, so that way...
Your contract is delivered to us, we've got to issue or send to the Secretary of State.
Before you sign it.
For it's executed, they've got to pass off on it.
And then they'll send a letter or a notice back to me saying, yes, that that's okay. I will then send it to you. You can execute it and then we'll send it to Hart and they'll execute it. Yeah, it's lots of, it's lots of backing boards, but...
And all that should happen before we receive the equipment?
Yes, it has to happen before we receive the equipment, so. But I will today go ahead and send the non-executable form to one of my contacts down there in the state. Make sure she knows it's coming, simply because I'm not gonna be here in the building to answer phone calls and stuff. I will have my phones forwarded, but just in case something flips through, I want them to know what's going on.
As an aside to all this, I visited with the Lubbock Elections Administrator Conference.
Dorothy.
Yeah, several months back, we were talking voting machines. And she was remitting the fact that they had not made this decision earlier because their voting machines were now pretty worthless. And so I think definitely that we all did a good play.
I will say...
Spoke of our machines when we did it.
Madison County has about half the number of machines that we do. They did sell theirs back to Hart with that same kind of two hundred and fifty dollars a piece that we, we were offered. So yes, I believe this was a, a very good move. Since we took in that original bid, I've cut out a couple of pieces, saving about ten thousand dollars. So it's, it's really, it's done a lot of good. And I know it's been a pain in the rear and a lot of red tape and a lot of sitting on our hands and waiting and poor Billy just keeps waiting. So, you know, it's, it's been a lot of, a lot of work, but I really do think that it's gonna be the best thing for the county. My understanding is when I do come and crew those machines, it will be a fairly lengthy affair of getting them all unloaded and getting the current ones loaded back. And then I'll have a guy here in the office with me from Hart that will help me do all the acceptance testing and that should take the remainder of that, that first week in January, so.
I understand that most of the voting problem, the national recount that's been going on, have been handwritten ballots and not the electronic ballots?
Electronic ballots sure are hard to mess up. I'm, I'm just gonna be real honest. Hart sent out an email in the middle of the election and said that they have never found in the history of the HVS system any reputable evidence of vote flipping, vote tampering. There's been allegations, but it's been vote or error, and that's what we were seeing. I mean, when I'd go up and stand behind somebody that had asked me to sell, you know, assists, they would, they would click enter when they didn't mean to move their cursor. It's, it's a lack of understanding the machines.
And the learning card will need to change to be zero because of the same effect?
They, they are for the most part. I will have one set up in my office from now until I decide to move it that will be in test mode. So if people wanna come by and play with it, I will have that available for them, so. And you guys are welcome to come down and...
We gotta cut a check before this is delivered?
No, the check comes thirty days after delivery, so.
How much is that gonna be?
We've gotten almost all the money from Ector County for that equipment except what, five thousand dollars? That's long gone. It's good.
Yeah.
The lowest five?
Sir, the lowest five.
The lowest five for just a few things.
Couple of computers that I've kept, that I'll ship out. I, I did talk with Mitzi one day last week. She's retiring at the end of the year as well. Everybody's leaving. So she will get those machines ready for the first of the year as well. I've got them pretty much ready to go. I'm gonna get that guy from Hart to help me back up. Getting information so I can everything I need.
Okay, so we, we do expect, have every expectation of that, of the certification to come by December fifteenth, not four. I've sent several emails in person.
Yes, the judge...
They didn't have to wait until the eleventh hour. They could certify that, but...
But they, they thanks.
I bet they don't. I bet it's only a day. But we expect them to do so in their interim, interim time. We're gonna need to do some execute on the contracts.
I believe we execute that contract.
Now that you've authorized...
Well, no, actually, we authorize...
You're authorizing a signature.
Contract to be executed at the proper time?
After the secretary has...
After he's signed it.
After he's signed it. After he's signed it.
After the timeline is completed, is that?
Yeah.
Sounds like myth, if we're involved. Go back and then back.
Yeah, it's lots of.
It's almost like interim contract, interim contract.
Yeah, pretty much.
Make sure the news tech gets that right.
You have any questions, you call me. Because Hart agreed it, and I told them to have a heart attack.
Same contracts that I've.
Okay, I'm going to bring this and see if it's, can't let go. Okay, I've got Mr. Sykes with the motion, Commissioner Wiley with the second to authorize County Judge to execute contract, the master agreement, contract, the master agreement with Hart for verity voting equipment, subsequent to the review of Secretary's document. Your signature will hinge on the Secretary's state.
Right.
Review and signature of.
Yeah. Approving and signature.
If you just keep us in the information pipeline.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay. Let's hope there's not another delay in that matter.
What would that be, over 10 years?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, yeah. It's been quite a trip.
It has.
And the equipment that.
I'm well learning.
Were using, I believe, used it 10 years or 11 years, and it's now 12 years old. So there's substantial new technology involved in.
The original software setup computer that I use, they don't even make that version of Windows anymore, nor do they, unless you have, you know, somebody like Hart who works on it. You, you can't get it.
Are you gentlemen aware that these machines that we have currently use are non-rechargeable battery tanks?
That are how much a piece, remember?
Yeah. And they start to go down and get weed?
I throw them in the trash can. The new ones are lithium ion, like your cell phones, they're wirelessly charged.
You talk about old technology?
Yeah. They're just double D's that are all hot going together with a, with a fuse on them. They're, they're super great, so technology is, is a good thing, so.
Well.
When it works. When it works.
When it works. It's don't get too exciting. It doesn't always, it's not always good, but nearly always. Or maybe it's not for some of us, maybe it's good. Some of them are better. Okay. Item number 14. We've got discussed, consider burn restrictions of regulations of certain fireworks. This will be the last opportunity that we have to regulate any fireworks if there needs to be regulation of certain fireworks for the Christmas holidays, Christmas, New Year's holiday. I don't think so, you know, register. Okay, no action. Is there any other matter of business that needs to be, well, or extension? The motion to adjourn. Wiley, Rogers, all in favor? Hope everybody has a Merry Christmas. We'll see you about again.
A long silver button, got the red on it?